Okay, good evening. The Planning Board meeting on Tuesday, June 20th will come to order. Is everything on the agenda we're going to hear?
One item is going to be continued to the July 11th meeting, and that would be 1975 Salem Street.
Okay, and everything else that's on the agenda will be heard?
That is correct.
Okay, great, okay. So let us start with the Form A.
Sure. So let me pull up the plan.
1975 is going to require you to re-notice.
So this is 271 Stevens Street. The applicant is looking to split one lot into two lots in a residential three-zone. The applicant has been before the ZBA and has received the appropriate variances in order to make two conforming lots. Specifically, in our situation, or what we specifically look at is the contiguous buildable area, so they have received a variance for that. And all other dimensional requirements are standard. The only other issue to point out is that the Conservation Commission has not yet heard the filing on this particular issue, and they are in the fifth -- there's a piece of the proposed development in the 50-foot no-build, so there may be some movements in the design. However, that's up to the commission when they do hear it. Otherwise, it meets all the dimensional requirements.
What zoning district is this?
I'm sorry?
What zoning district is this?
This is a residential three.
John, I'm in a boner, so I think maybe I should recuse myself from this.
Yeah, okay, okay.
Is there anything that Concom may do that would affect frontage or access?
Not frontage or access. It's more so moving the actual structures themselves a little bit. If they were to move it over and say, "Maybe you should shift that lot line a little bit over so that you're further away from the wetland," or something of that nature. What they decide, I don't know, and it's not really in our jurisdiction. But they -- I did talk to Jennifer Hughes, the Conservation Administrator, and she did want to caution me that they have not heard this project yet, and it isn't a substantial issue.
So, I love this. So Lot 1, what does soil condition slope and topography have to do with this, granting the variance for a lot that the size is too small? We should ask the ZBA, but that's a mystery. That is, I mean, it's something that's -- it's so flagrantly off from what the law says. It's --
They granted the variance.
It's shocking to the conscience, I will say, so. But it's a legit lot because they've got a variance. The other lot is -- has the 25,000 square feet, and it has the frontage, I think. And you asked the right question, is will they be able to have access over the frontage? They will be able to have access over the frontage, based on what you said, so.
And the only question I have is if they have to do -- Concom says this is going to be one different, will this plan still be sufficient?
I would be shocked if it's a problem, but when are they hearing it, and how much more time do we have on this?
So it's 26 days, so we have 30 days to hear it, to make a decision unless it's constructed -- constructively approved. At the next meeting, it was -- so it was timestamped on June 15th. On July 11th, it will be 26 days. So we still have time to vote on it at the next meeting. However, I'm not too sure if the Conservation Commission will have a decision for us by that point in time.
Okay. Could you check with Jennifer to see what -- I mean, I would very much doubt that they would do anything that would put us in, you know, a situation where they couldn't build, but we might as
She said that they would definitely probably issue a permit of some sort, but what that looks like at the end of the day, she does not know.
Okay. Any other questions from other members? Our practice usually on the Form As is to make a recommendation to the planner to sign the Form A, that it's not a subdivision, and it's not required. But I think we can hold it off to the next meeting till we get additional
We have enough time.
So, okay.
Yes.
Everybody okay with that?
Yep.
Yeah, okay. Next item is a bond release for Matthew's Way.
So on July 5th, 2011, the Planning Board approved a definitive subdivision for five lots on 288 Sutton Street called Matthew's Way. Per the recommendation of the DPW, the applicant was asked to post a $44,250 roadway bond. The applicant has completed part of that work and is now asking for a reduction of that bond. The requests in the project have been reviewed by DPW, and a recommendation was made to release 29,950 and to retain 14,300 until all work is completed.
Have all the lots been released?
Essentially, yes, they've all been built, sold.
Oh, so they are all built, okay.
Yes.
Okay. Lynn, do you have any questions?
No, that's, I mean, they're holding, I think that's the proper amount. We don't, you know, the town's been in situations, we know with the street acceptance, where they don't want to do the final as-built, but we, if you remember, we did raise the final release to make sure that it's enough, that they'll do the as-built, even though there's not, it's going to be a private street.
This is the one near the airport, right?
Yes, the hammer had turned around, yes.
Yeah, so, okay. So, does somebody, I would like to make a motion to release all the remaining bond for Matthew's Way except for 14,300?
So I'm hoping to release the bond for Matthew's Way, 288 Sutton Street, all except for $14,300.
Okay.
Second.
Motion made in second. Just no further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
And let the record show that Peter Stain didn't recuse himself, so.
That was for the A and R.
Oh, the A and R. That's right, not this one. What am I thinking? You're one behind. You did, I didn't hear you speak there. I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Yeah. I had a long day today. Yeah, you were the last one, so sorry about that one. Okay, one of the public hearings, Country Club Circle is the first one, so where were we on that?
So this is an application for a watershed special permit. The applicant proposes to construct a retaining wall, in-ground pool, spa, walkway, patio, fence, and associated grading, and the non-discharge and the non-disturbance zone. The applicant has updated the plan to move the pool outside of the non-disturbance zone per the ZBA recommendation. However, the wetland delineation was not confirmed when they did that, so they had closed the hearing, and then when they went to go confirm the wetland delineation, it turns out that a piece of the pool is actually still in the non-disturbance. So they went back before the Planning Board and, I mean, excuse me, the Zoning Board of Appeals, and they were issued an insubstantial change because they still felt as though the original plan was further in the non-disturbance zone, and at least this plan pushed it as far out as they possibly could. So that's one thing to note, and now also to note that the wetlands have been confirmed and delineated, and confirmed by the Conservation Agent. The Stormwater Review Consultant has reviewed the updated plans. Lisa Agelson was the one who reviewed this particular project, and she signed up on the application with one recommendation, that the board-conditioned soil testing be done at the time of installation to make sure that the cul-de-sac unit is not sitting in groundwater. The applicant has also submitted a landscape plan, which has been reviewed by the Conservation Agent, and also reviewed by the planning staff.
Okay. Any questions from the board?
Can you just zoom in on the bit about the pool?
Yep. So you can see this is the non-disturbance line right here, and you can see where it kind of goes through the pool, right over back here.
I have a cut-out version for you. The portion that the change in the -- for the record, George St. Boris, engineer of the project, representing Mr. Stanley. The change in the wetland line, the resulting change of the non-disturbance zone, put 132 square feet of the pool back inside the non-disturbance zone, prior to the redelineating of the line. The difference of the lines are over here. Up this end is where you saw the major difference. The non-disturbance zone was right at the edge of the pool, because the request by the ZBA was to try to get the pool out, and we were just able to do that. However, after we redelineated the line, they put a portion of it back in.
Peter, are you okay with the maintenance plan and all that stuff right now?
Yeah.
Okay. Lynn?
No, we went, yeah, we went through the O and M plan, I think, a couple times.
Okay, a couple times, yeah.
This one's been a long one.
Yeah, since the last meeting, Mr. Chairman, all that was left was really to have the two or three plant species that the Conservation recommended changing, and also just confirmation of the wetland line.
Okay, good. So it's, this is one that's us for, right?
That would be correct.
Yeah, okay. Erin, do you have any questions?
No.
Okay. Okay. If there are no further questions or issues, does somebody want to make a motion to close the public hearing?
I'll make a motion to close the watershed special permit hearing for 58 Country Club Circles.
Second. Okay, motion made in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. And let us look at the decision here.
I did realize that the date is wrong. It should be June 20th and not June 6th. So I'll make that correction.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, I think it's a bunch of places, June 6th is referred to, yeah. The, in the findings of fact, where we got that slight adjustment, you know, maybe in Number 2 you might just add that, you know, further, after the wetlands were redelineated, there was a finding that there was an insubstantial change, so.
Rebecca, where's the soil testing condition?
I put that prior to in-site work or issuance of a And I know that we had some discussion about the swimming pool maintenance plan, so I highlighted that and put it in effect as long as the pool is in operation.
And 27, height waiver, special permit, I'm wondering.
That's, Erin might have, so I'll fix that.
And Erin cut and paste, yeah.
Should be watershed special permit there.
And that date in that one, the 6th, do you want to change?
Yep, to June 20th, yep.
Was the last revision actually May 25th with the wetlands delineation, or is there a revision after that?
May 20th.
Okay. You ready?
Yeah, I think so. Would somebody like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the watershed special permit for 58 Country Club Circle as amended.
Second. Motion made in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, good.
Thank you.
So 1975 Salem Street is
Continuing until the next meeting.
Continuing. And we have a new public hearing, 175 Salem Street, so this is a application for a worst bet special permit, so if you could keep us the backstory on that, that'd be great.
Yep. So this, the applicant proposes to construct a 576-square-foot garage and small extension of the existing paved driveway within the non-discharge zone. The application has been reviewed by the Stormwater Consultant, who has submitted some comments back to the applicant's engineer. The applicant's engineer is going to be making some plan updates and submitting that, those updates within the week. The town engineer has also provided comments in regards to the driveway permit, and making sure that the grading does not go onto the road. The wetland delineation has been confirmed by the Conservation Agent, and additionally, it was brought to our attention, and we received a letter from the Ridgewood Cemetery Association, and they would like to express their support for this project, and a hard copy of that letter has been provided to you.
I see that everybody have this. By the way, just as people may not know, Jim LaFond used to be the chairman of the Conservation Commission back in a prior day, many years ago, so.
Well, they are in full support of the project.
Yes, I guess they are, so, okay. So anything more, just in terms of the specifics of that, and our reviews and so forth?
Nothing more in the specifics, and we're really just waiting for some of the updates in regards to some of the things that TUC had asked for them to place on the plan, specifically some details in terms of the stormwater structure that is proposed, some limits of work, and so just some technical items that need to be updated. And I can bring up the plan for you to review right now as well.
Good, good.
Yeah, it was really, for the record, I'm Jack Sullivan, owner of the Sullivan Engineering Group. My client's on vacation this week, so I'm here to present. But Rebecca hit at the nail on the head. The review agent just wanted to see the limit of work line clearly delineated, which I had shown on the wetland side of the project where the limit was, but I can show the limit behind the garage as well. And they also wanted a detail of the roof drain schematic and show some invert elevations on the roof drain. Just to add quickly, I think Rebecca did a good job summarizing the project, but basically it's a 24-by-24 attached garage. The Devlin's have owned this property for 21 years. The lot was created in 1984. It's an old home, but there was a lot division back in 1984, so technically this lot was created in 1984. The house is connected to the town sewer system. It was connected back in 2004. And the existing house is over 2,500 square feet in gross floor area. It's slightly above that, so they're allowed under the bylaw to increase by 25%, which would put them at 643 square feet of allowable expansion, and the two-car garage, which is 24-by-24, is 576 square feet, so they're within that threshold. Everything else, the peer review was pretty straightforward. They, I typically put limitations on pesticides and herbicides and sealants going forward as a deed restriction. I placed that on the plan, and that would be put as a deed restriction on the property as well. And that's about it. I mean, it's only a slight extension of the paved driveway to get to the garage. All the grading, we're within a foot of existing grades. We're basically matching into the grading on-site. There's a steep embankment off of this garage, so it was really well-defined where the wetland line is, which the Conservation Agent agreed with, so the limits of this project are well-defined.
Now, I had a question, basically, do you have an image of this area, the tree line?
I was just curious where on Salem Street it is. I'm just missing it.
It's at the locus.
If you're looking at the Ridgewood Cemetery, it's the house just to the right.
Ridgewood Cemetery is right here, and that home's right there.
They're direct about it.
Oh, 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 yeah, 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 yeah.
It looks like we are extending the driveway, basically for snow removal, you'd almost have to push it to the 100-foot buffer zone. There's really no other way to move the snow off the existing or the new driveway with the garage. Is there any buffering you can put there when snow's stockpiled? So, because then it looks like it drops off, what, two feet every? The grade drops off pretty good.
Well, I mean, right now, the driveway's within the existing driveway, and that, from my plan, is within the 100-foot buffer zone. The extension will not be?
No, but when they plow it, before they would have plowed it probably right where the garage is, now they're going to have to plow it to the right of the garage?
Right.
So the new snow will, the new plowing method or snow, even if you're using a snowblower, you're going to have to pile it to the right because you can't have any snow blocking the garage doors, of course. What's the, what's on that side? Is it grass, is it?
I don't know what it, I guess it would be grass at the end of the day. In the tree line, we're not taking any trees down as part of the project, so I guess it would be grass, which you would want for snow storage to promote.
Right, yeah.
When it melts, so it could move back into the ground.
You know, my only thing was just thinking, because you're going to have to go, you're definitely going to have to stockpile over the 100-foot line, because it looks, is it two feet off the driveway there in the corner?
Yeah, yeah.
Is, you know, just even putting some sort of buffering, even landscaping buffering, whether it's a mulch bed or something like that, a raised mulch bed that, you know, something that goes there that stops the salt and snow from melting into it. I mean, you can still stockpile there, you'd want to stockpile in the grass, but, yeah, we don't have an image of that, really. See what's there.
Where's the driveway?
Yeah, see, it comes around, you can't really see it.
It goes into this other lot.
So it isn't over the front, so
There's an easement over the other lot for access.
I think that was before we had the ability to create, you know, you would have had to give it for
A special permit.
I don't think I existed at that time, so.
Can I follow the town engineer's comments about a driveway permit? Just kind of curious if you've gotten, if that's been, when that occurs, if that's occurred, and if you took into consideration the comments of the engineer, and then just kind of wondering aloud if it's an easement, the driveway is an easement, whether or not the other lot owner would have to be involved in the driveway permit. It's their driveway as well.
Typically, they would go for a driveway permit until they receive the permit to do the work. Excuse me, and the part of the work that he's proposing, from my knowledge and from my discussion with the town engineer, is on the property, not necessarily the grading for the driveway that goes off of the lot line. It's only going to be the grading of the portion of the driveway that's on their lot specifically.
Yeah, that's the way I read that.
That's right. So, yeah, following, assuming we get a decision, everything gets recorded, and then they, before they could do the driveway work, they'd have to get that individual permit from the town engineer. But Rebecca's right, it would only be for the extension of the 250 square feet of driveway. The curb cut, the remainder of the driveway is remaining as-is.
Okay. Do we have anything else we need to, this looks pretty simple. We have, are we waiting to get anything back from our consultants, or just from the applicant?
We're just waiting for some additional information from the applicant, and then a sign-off from our consultant.
Okay, okay. So we should be able to get that done before the next meeting?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
So it sounds like you're, as part of this, you're collecting water out the existing roof that was not already collected?
Correct.
So I think it's a good example of some best practices, and leaving it, I think, better than it was before.
Yeah.
I just, you know, want to recognize that if I'm interpreting it correctly, it's a good example of best practices.
Yeah, good, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good.
Then I will have the plans updated with the comments. I tried, I was, I've been so busy, I didn't have time. Rebecca had actually given me these comments probably two weeks ago, but I didn't have time to update the plans, but I will, I'll have them back with us.
We'll be prepared for July 11th.
Right, okay, thank you.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you.
When is the next hearing?
July 11th. Yep, the next one is July 4th, but because of the holiday, we moved it back, so it'll be July 11th.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Okay, discussion topics.
Yes, we just have two really quick discussion topics, one of them being tree cutting in the watershed, only because there is a company that has been coming by called App Tree, Inc., and has been approaching houses door-to-door and offering tree-cutting services. So people have been removing a lot of trees that are in the watershed and also near wetlands and places that you would want to have some staff review prior to removing. So the Conservation Commission has issued a cease and desist order against the company themselves, trying to inform them that, you know, there is a watershed, they are cutting very close to the wetland, and that they should, you know, make sure that they have the proper permitting before moving forward. They have also been issuing enforcement orders to the homeowners who have been removing these trees, and also, in some cases, they've been requiring some replanting, but only in two cases have they been requiring replanting. So the planning staff hasn't necessarily been too-too involved in regards to what's been happening, other than to reaching out to those who have violated the enforcement orders and also the watershed protection bylaw, and inform them that, you know, before you're supposed to be removing trees, please let us know so that we can make sure that there is no permit required, or if it's a simple thing as erosion control, or whether or not it would be more than fine to take them down, and we can just note that so that we have it in the record that you're, you will be taking down three trees, we reviewed them, that that's fine to do so. So when there has been a very, very clear, clear cutting of a lot, we've always brought those members to the board for review, specifically so that you guys can take a look at what has been done. However, we've kind of been letting Conservation take the reins on this one and kind of just following up, and we just wanted to bring it to your attention and see whether or not there is another way that you'd like us to approach it, or to continue to approach it in that manner.
So I think the first thing is, is they have to get the canvasser solicitor thing from the police department, if someone should just tell the police department if they have tree companies in the future, if they can just give you guys heads up. So you guys can, hey, who's the name and number, so that way you guys can give them the rules before they go out?
I do know that the Conservation Administrator has been in touch with Town Council, who has also been trying to get in touch with this company to kind of let them know, you know, you really can't be doing that.
Oh, so they didn't have the documents from the police department either?
They did not.
They're total scapholus.
I think what Rebecca says makes sense, you know, if it's a major thing, it comes before the board. I think another element of this should be consistency, and I think they've drafted some basic tree guidelines that provide the consistency that I think is helpful, everyone's being treated the same way, and so I'm good with it.
Any other thoughts? Good, I think it's, again, it's, have any of the violations been egregious?
Not necessarily. The only one that really kind of had, that was the closest to a wetland, was the 25 feet to a wetland in the watershed, and it was mostly shrubbery, and they are going through a replanting process with Conservation. They've shared the plans with us, so they're kind of smaller plants, they're not necessarily larger trees. There was another one, 476 Grape Pond Road. They had removed a tree right on the, or cut a tree right on the lake, I'm sure Peter saw, and then they had burned a couple trees as well. And so those were a little further up, and when we went to go out to inspect, the gentleman was like, "Oh, well, I'm going to be building a house here." It was about 250 feet away from the lake. So they had said that they had filed with the Planning Board, and they had, but that was back in, I want to say the planning board, and they had, but that was back in, I want to say, the early to, yeah, early 90s or so, so the permit had expired.
I think by a couple years, decades.
We had informed him that if he was going to be doing any building or any further removal of any vegetation, that because of the distance from the lake, specifically the lake itself, that he would need to inform the planning department and the conservation department, and he said that he would, he would be doing so in the, in the near future. So, hopefully, we'll be hearing from him before we find any more houses.
Yeah, hopefully.
But it was just in this case, typically, we have, I've been here for over a year now, and we haven't really had a lot of tree issues, per se, but just because this one company had come out, and it was just a lot of different areas, with neighbors calling and reporting, we just really wanted to make sure that you guys were aware of the situation.
Great, good, excellent, excellent. Okay, other items, planning board list and authorizations.
So, this is.
Do you have, do you have a letter for us?
I do have the letter to circulate. So, Jean will be focusing more on the master plan and the regional housing production plan, and she is typically the one who signs the decisions on behalf of the planning board, and in order to do so, we have to submit a letter to the registry, and since she's going to be focusing more on those issues, she had asked if I would be willing, and I'm more than willing, and whether or not the board would authorize me to sign on behalf. So, this letter would authorize me to sign on the decisions on behalf of the board.
Good, excellent. You're on the hook now.
How many planners have you worked with, John?
So, gosh, I can't put them all on both hands at this point, yes. So, just a couple of other things that, related to the master plan, we actually, right tomorrow, Wednesday, are going to interview all the people, the master plan, for the members of the master plan committee, so I think, once that happens, then the master plan process will strike up a little bit, and, you know, we may even want to have the members of the committee come here, maybe some night, I don't know, to, you know, have a discussion about it. They're going to be the ones that are really, I think their role is to solicit a lot of the community input and feedback, and also work with the committee, and it sounds like Jean will be spending a good part of her time on that, too, so, you know, maybe we'll have Jean come in, and she can sit out here, and we'll ask her who she is.
I'll let you extend that invite, too.
Yeah.
John, I think it'd be a good idea to have them come here.
I think it would be a good idea.
I mean, if nothing else, it expresses our interest in what they're doing, so.
Good. Anything else on the master plan that you know of?
Not that I know of.
Okay, good. The only other thing I would have mentioned is, I know you had this note on 505 Sutton Street, can you give us the short story of what's going on there?
Yes, so we received a proposal from the Massachusetts Housing Partnership in regards to a proposal to put in a 40B development at that particular location. The board, as well as other board, zoning board, board of selectmen, were all invited to attend a site visit. A site visit was conducted, and the board of selectmen had combined some of their thoughts and put it in a letter to send back to the Massachusetts Housing Partnership in regards to that, you were CC'd on that letter, so we wanted to make sure that you all got a copy of that, so that you could see exactly what their concerns were.
Yeah, okay. I mean, it's, it is one of those weird things where, we're the land use board, but we don't do 40Bs, it's, it doesn't make particular good sense to me, but that's the way it is. I do think that commenting on major projects like that is a good idea, whether they, you know, listen to, the ZBA listens to what we say or not is a different story, but I, I do think that that, that project's a little bit of a stretch, it's a little bit too much density for that property, but we'll see what happens.
That is essentially the thought to the board as well.
Yeah, so, anything else anybody wants to raise? Do we have minutes?
Yes, we have.
Oh, yes, minutes, June 6, minutes. Lynn, do you want to do your parting shot?
I'll make a motion to approve the June 6, 2017 meeting minutes as presented.
Second. Oh, should made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
And before we break, Lynn, I just want to say, it's been an absolute pleasure being on the board with you the last few years, we definitely miss you. I, now, what are you going to do with all your free time?
I know, it's, it's bittersweet, you know, it's sweet because I won't be spending 40 hours a month on this.
But, yes, we miss you, and I've enjoyed being on the board with you. I think you bring a, a unique perspective that we will miss, so thank you.
I second that.
Well, I may not be done with the town yet, so I'm sure, there's a lot of issues that I want to deal with, and now I'll be free to deal with them as I sit there without having to sit in the background.
Good, well, again, thank you.
You're welcome.
Would you like to make the motion to adjourn?
I will make the motion to adjourn.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, well, that's good.